I'll call the meeting to order. Before we get down to business, let me read the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. You have the minutes from last month's meeting in front of you. Any additions or corrections? All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Minutes are approved. Doug.
First of the night, if there may one. But, if she's letting name correctly, number one is Carol Boy Lettine, concept drawing on Spies in the Road, One New Lot. Off of an existing common driveway easement, it'd probably be at best if you would look at the color drawing as I just kind of tell you what's going on here. The yellow areas, the area identified as the potential new lot, more or less, there might be some setback issues and some other things that we'd have to work on. And it may not work at all if the health department can't get septic and reserve on both lots, not just on this one. The one in the back has that existing system and Gary would have to evaluate it and its condition and if there's a reserve for that lot as well. The reason that this comes before the planning commission tonight is not so much for those concerns, those are more administrative things. This would actually be the last lot off of the common driveway easement that is shared. If you look at that yellow boot looking shape on there and you'll see where it says 10-foot setback written above a house, that's a track and there's another track to the left. They both share the common driveway easement and both of them have enough room to re-subdivide their property. So procedurally, what we do is we have a form that allows the proponent, the person getting the last lot, to go to the others and get their acknowledgement that they don't have a problem with getting the last lot off the common driveway. My understanding is Ms. Lettine did just that with a form that we provided her and one person didn't agree, so they wouldn't sign it and she was not at all and still not able to get ahold of the other person at all. That's pretty much the reason it's here before she spends any money to get a survey done and get it approved. She's just looking for some guidance from the planning commission since staff can't approve the lot without the written consent of the neighbors. But I do want to mention, I didn't find any incident in the past where this didn't occur. In every incident, the first person that came to ask for that last lot was granted that last lot on a first come, first served basis. That was in the policy of the planning commission. So if someone else came in later, whether they acknowledged it or not, they wouldn't be able to get a lot unless the planning commission granted a variance for an additional lot off that easement. And I didn't find a case of that. I did find in the past where we had, conceptually, the planning commission committed to allowing some people to re-divide so that they all had equal divisions and they all understand they were going to go from three lots to six lots and those other lots never came back in anyway. Clear as mud, sorry.
Doug, I know we're not approving the plan, it's just a conceptual at this point. But I have a question, of course, the health department hasn't looked at the lot yet. The darkened yellow area, is the area under what is labeled 30-foot setback? Is that a lot of record now?
No, our zoning requirements require a 30-foot setback off of...
No, I'm not talking about the 30-foot setback.
I'm just talking about the lot underneath that.
I'm just talking about the lot that is underneath that 30-foot setback writing.
It has road frontage and it's too small to re-divide.
Okay, but that lot is essentially bounded by the lighter yellow...
Yes.
And the new dark, dark yellow or the bold yellow.
Yeah, this, this lot right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that lot is a lot of record and it's off of the common driveway easement, but it's not...
It has frontage.
It's not germane to this plat.
But, but it's one of the four that would be coming off the common driveway?
No.
No, it's not.
Since it has frontage, it wouldn't count.
Okay.
So we'd be counting the one lot down here, the one lot next to her property, her existing house, and then the new one would be the fourth lot. That's where we get the four.
All right. The second question I have, so the requister is the house sitting at, it's labeled 942?
Yes.
So if they need, if the health department has problems, they have space to enlarge? I guess the boot, when I look at this boot, I'm saying, where are you going to get a building site in here?
Well, I think, you know, this is just a scale drawing. There might be a room for a single wide mobile home to sit long ways between those two arrows, the one being the 10-foot setback arrow and one being, one being the 30-foot setback arrow. There might be enough room for even a larger unit. But yeah, it's, you're right, I mean, there's very limited space. And that's going to be something that, that the health department is going to, you know, when she goes to get a preliminary plat, I mean gets a plat and get a survey, she's going to have to most likely hire a soil scientist to satisfy Gary Ferguson. And that might, once Gary gets the soil information, that's going to really determine whether or not she can put a unit on there at all.
The, because we don't have dimensions on here, the size of the foot, the bottom of the L.
Right.
Do you have any idea what the, roughly what that is across there?
No, maybe 50 feet.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought.
And there's limitations on that too for septic reasons. The environmental health department has to keep field lines a certain distance off of those, each of those lines. So that would most likely be a reserve area unless that was, unless that was determined to be the home site. And like I said, this is just a sketch drawing we did in the office. That line may come back another hun, you know, another 50 feet, making that boot, you have that bottom part being 100 feet. Because theoretically, where 942 sits, where the house sits, she could shrink that down to 30,000 square feet. So this is just a best guesstimate and give you guys something to look at. The health department and the soil scientists will determine if it could even be done at all and then how it would be done.
All right, so the question before us is from a conceptual standpoint, do we have any problem, if this came back to us, do we have any problem? Do we have any problem approving the, the final driveway access? I think that's the basic question.
That's the question posed, yes.
And in the past, they, to the first person who requested, they've always granted that.
Well, there's one allowed, you know, to be added to it.
Yeah.
And that's typically the way the planning commission, in my research...
Even if there's been at least one person who was opposed to it, one of the others.
Well, yes, but this person didn't sign their name, they, that they disagreed, they didn't sign it at all. So I don't, I don't have any confirmation what they really said.
I'm here to talk.
Good deal. Would you come up to the microphone and talk to the planning commission? Let them know your name.
My name's Jake Waters and I'm at 936 Watts Mill Road. And looking at that, there were actually four plats serviced by that driveway coming off of Watts Mill Road. The one to the right, the proposed one, Carol's, mine, and Mickey Walker's. That's five. Am I correct or incorrect?
I don't know, we did the research in the office, we didn't find any more than Ms. Lettine knows. And then which one of these are yours?
Because I've already signed, mine is the house, 936 is the one...
Is this 936 or the one, next one down?
Mine's the one right beside the proposed lot, Mickey's is the one down.
Right, yeah, that would be, that was this one, this one, and hers are the only ones served off the easement exclusively. This one has road frontage, that's, that's a total of four.
Okay. Before the trailer went back, I was asked to sign, and I did, saying that that was the fourth one.
When was this?
Oh, gosh, 2002, before I built my house.
I think what you're saying is that that house is usually that easement right there, but they have road frontage to property. Or, but that's what you're trying to say, maybe this is a thing, they're usually, they have...
Well, what I'm saying is Thelma Waters' land goes right up to the driveway and...
It has road frontage too.
It has road frontage, but the driveway goes right beside hers?
That, we don't, we're not counting either, we're not counting this one, even if they access it, we're not counting it because it has road frontage.
No, I'm not counting, I'm not counting that one.
Or that one. But that one has road frontage as well.
Well, that's the very start of the driveway.
Not according to the drawings, it's the other road.
I mean what you're seeing, but that I was...
I'm not proving nothing, this, this is crazy. Ain't nothing here, no this, no that.
Well, where's the, what else are you talking about?
This one here.
That has road frontage.
Okay.
No, it has road frontage, that's all it needs is parallel.
Okay.
I understand, just let them know what you think. What is that, a good draw?
Well, it's from the roadway, that's that picture that I'm contesting, because right here is the driveway and property lot.
Yeah, this, yeah, this one, we're not counting, we're not counting that one, we're just all the ones past that, because they legally own that little access to the road. Does that help you?
Well, I understand, but I was just, that's why I wanted to clear up, is why I were doing a fourth, when I was told where I was doing a fourth.
That's, that, no, let me go over this real quick again.
No, I understand what you're saying.
This is one, this is two, and three, served exclusively off the easement. The only way they can get to the road is off this easement. This guy here, if he wanted, he could build another driveway to the road. You guys can't do that.
No.
So that's one, two, three, that one doesn't count. This would be the fourth.
Well, that's why I wanted to clear up.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if there's already four, there's already four.
No, that's, this, this doesn't count, there's only, there's already three.
Okay.
Do you have some additional comments?
I have notes.
It just, I work, I work seven days, four days, twenty hours, just a day, if I'm not off, obviously. That's the only reason why I'm doing my job.
Okay, all right. Thank you for being here.
Can you start over and explain this?
All right. Okay, hold on a minute, just, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Leterno, very close by the way. And when I first purchased the property, there was a single wide on that front cleared piece of property and there is an existing septic system. And now I've cleared the back lot and put another house and septic system up there. But there was a single wide there, just so you know, because I know you said we'd have to see if there was a septic tank.
And if there's an existing system, Gary Ferguson will have to evaluate it.
Right, we'll have to get it certified.
And it has to have duplication, which is a whole additional area.
But I just wanted to let y'all know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, floor's back open. Brad, Commissioner Harrison?
Uh, I don't, you know, as long as Gary Ferguson approves this for septic and stuff and it meets our square footage requirements, I, I don't see how the plan could have any problem with it, except for, is there some kind of stipulation on the right ways that you can't have more than five people coming in on a right way or something like that?
No, the limit is four exclusively, this would be the fourth. It meets our criteria.
Yeah, just from my standpoint, you know, as long, as long as it meets our requirements, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't see a problem, you know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be scared to pursue with Gary and see if it would meet his standards and then come forward.
I would like to mention one thing that is not in the write-up. This new lot will be additionally responsible for maintenance of that roadway. We can't go back retro actively and make the other people sign a piece of paper and say now, you know, there was three, but now there's going to be four and we need to get money from you two. You know, if it was a new subdivision, we would have that document. But what we do in this case, when the plat came in, we put a stamp on the plat and then that would basically bind this lot to the maintenance responsibility of that driveway as well.
My comment or question goes back to, if we've traditionally done the first come, first served, which I agree with that, and we talked about this scenario about a year or two ago about a lot that on 411, right? Why would we give the, the property owner a form to go talk to the neighbors to have it assigned when it doesn't come into play anyway?
Well, it's just something...
I can answer that.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I mean, if it's not...
We have, we have a, basically it's for fairness to let everybody know that this is the last lot. Did you have any plans of your own? You have a chance now to speak. If they sign that they agree and they understand, then we go ahead and do this administratively. But since we didn't have that, our operating procedure is to come to the planning commission to get, let you all know that we did not have agreement from adjoining property owners on that easement and let you make the determination that that's first come, first served.
That makes more sense, I understand that, okay.
Any other comments?
Is there anybody else out there that wants to speak to it?
The gentleman that just left, is he the one that's not signed?
Neither one of them has signed it.
Him or this one over here on the right side under the 30-foot setback wouldn't have signed no way.
This, this guy, he lives here.
He just left.
He just left. Yes, he lives here.
Right, right.
He would need, he was the one that the form was for. He did not sign the form.
Just so you know, the gentleman that just left, I left him several messages and I wrote him several notes and tacked it on his door, but he was non-responsive, so I could not get his signature. The other gentleman that lives one lot over, I did speak with him, but he said that he wasn't going to sign it because I didn't need to get a paper signed. He's never had to do that before.
This is one whole big lot.
So he wasn't really like, he wouldn't allow it, he just said that wasn't necessary.
And the way we got them, this gentleman here tonight, we sent them a letter, letting them know about this meeting and what was going to happen tonight.
Okay, that's his property right here and it goes all the way back to here, right?
Two and a half acres about, more or less.
And then what was mentioned about the septic field on this property, that it's a double wide down there or something before?
There was a mobile home there in the past with an existing system that's still underground.
On this pe, on the boot?
In somewhere in, yes, yes.
So before, we actually had two pieces, two, two things on one piece property?
Yeah, let's separate those, though. We had two homes on one property. Now she wants two homes on two properties. And she's coming in, being the first person to ask for the last lot.
Where's, where's the second lot on here that she spoke to?
To your left, to your left, right there, that's right where you're...
Off to the left of the...
Oh, okay, we don't really have a good view of that, okay, I'm sorry, I pointed the wrong place, right here's the other one.
So that driveway goes all the way back to this piece of property?
That property, that's number one, two, three.
Okay.
Sorry, that's not on the page.
So this one up here in the right-hand corner don't even come into play?
Doesn't count because it's got road frontage.
Correct.
It does come across, the driveway does come across his property, but he don't come into play.
He doesn't come into play because he owns the property that the driveway sits on.
Okay. All right, do we have a consensus that, conceptually, the plan is workable?
I believe so.
All right, we have a general agreement that the concept plan is workable. You proceed and work with the health department on... Okay, thank you. Doug?
Yes, sir. All right. Item A2, we have another concept plan. I think once again, it's going to be beneficial to look at the proposed plan. I know it's a little small, this is the best way to show it to you. These are, this is at the same property, it's just the existing situation versus the proposed I'm just going to start talking about it and then at some point, I'll stop talking about it and you can start asking questions and we can hear from the proponents. If you look at the drawing, to the right, it says proposed lot. Well, let's start with existing lots, you see existing lots. There's three lots there, one of them has a big commercial building, you probably know it is, you call it Hickory Corner?
Hickory Corner.
Yes, and they've got several businesses under one roof, there's a storage shed, you see some open storage, and then you see a roadway to the bottom surrounding that roadway and all around that property are mobile homes. On lot two is essentially nothing but mobile homes and lot three, I'm sorry, I said that backwards, lot one has the house on it, lot three has a commercial building, and lot two is, looks to be the landlocked one in the middle. That's all existing. The intent is to do what we see on the proposed lots where the commercial building and the storage unit and the covered building is cut off from the mobile home park and the home on lot one rests alone. And the intent and the reason behind that is so they can separate those properties and make a little bit more sense. So we're going from three lot, three lots now to three lots in the future. I want that to be what you remember after everything else I tell you. We've consulted with Mr. Lamb and Gary Ferguson at the health department and the main concern obviously is the environmental situation for septic. There is a great deal of mobile homes on this property and we've already discussed with Mr. Ferguson that some of the units, the septic is in such bad shape that he's going to have them either removed from the site, the owner will have to do that, or move them onto an existing empty place in the mobile home park. Because there's essentially very little left in the terms of environmental improvements out there, underground. So therefore, without knowing much more than what we've talked to Gary about, there's not a lot, let's get the understanding, there's not a lot of room for any kind of reserve except for maybe on a case-by-case basis. Well, let's look at lot number two on the proposed lots with the commercial buildings. Everything in the front of that, that goes all the way to 411 is impervious surface, it's all concrete or another surface. If you look to where it actually reads lot two, where it says two acres, that whole area is essentially all impervious surface of, you know, gravel and different surface materials, but there's very little else out there that's not been touched. Not only does Gary have no reserve area at all on this lot, he doesn't even know where any of the existing systems are or what's actually underground. So that kind of limits what can be done with his lot in the future. I mean, once, there might be a way to discover what that is, but it'd be a lot of probing through some really hard surface and I don't, I don't know what that would result in. But he has made the statement that he feels there's very little opportunity to find any reserve unless it was over on lot one or somewhere between lot one and the very tip-top part of lot three or off-site. But, you know, that hasn't, that option hasn't been explored. So essentially, lot one will have the house if approved in the future, lot two would have a commercial building and lot three would completely contain a mobile home park. Having said that, it looks like there's very little opportunity for Gary to find anything to make any substantial improvements in the future or meet our requirements for septic duplication. Having said that though, we have three lots, they're asking for three lots, there's no new net lot number and everything you see here is already here. And there would be an improvement by removing the bad septic systems that currently are on the ground. When we were in the meeting with Gary, I think he identified maybe three or four mobile homes that maybe have to come out of there. And that would be determined on a, you know, a complete evaluation by him to go unit to unit to make sure that everything's in order that he can sign that plat. So I leave it to the planning commission if you have any questions. I'll try to answer them or there might be somebody else in the room that can answer your questions. What they're looking for tonight is just, conceptually, before they spend a lot of money on hiring anybody that Gary may need them to hire or get a survey or do any more work than the surveyor's already done, to get a feeling from the planning commission which way they should go.
Can I ask some questions, Gary? Doug?
You can ask Gary too.
Uh, let me see if I understand it correctly. Lot three, the existing lot three will actually be, well, we have a reduction in, we have an actual increase in space in lot three, which has the problem septics on it.
Yeah, marginally, you'll have a little bit more land.
The lot two will, the commercial buildings, what are they, they're existing on lot three, right?
Lot two.
Well, if I'm looking at your drawing...
Oh, existing, yes, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
So basically, all we're doing is we're encapsulating the commercial buildings into a more confined space, but they don't have any real septic requirements other than some public restrooms, I guess.
Let's just make it simple, they're lopping off the corner commercial building from the mobile home park so they can market them both, possibly to sell one or the other. It's kind of hard to sell it all together. I don't really know what the restroom requirements, I mean, what's actually in the building? I'm sure there's some there, there was a restaurant, there's a big garage there and men work there all day, so I assume there's restroom facilities there of some form or another? Two, three bathrooms? Three bathrooms?
Because there's, there's no, no public restroom.
Right, I understand.
The other three, in the primary commercial building, there's three restaurants.
Okay.
The intent is to separate the house itself from the park.
Right, exactly.
Other than that, there's not, there's a tendency to increase numbers, if anything, they'll be free, there's many of them now.
Is the restroom or the septic facilities for that commercial building contained within what is the proposed new lot two or redefined lot two?
If you could come up to the microphone so we can capture this.
I can tell you what Gary, I mean Gary went out and evaluated and I, unless you know something different than Gary, he said they couldn't identify where most of the systems at.
I can tell you where the septic systems are, because I've had them cleaned and pumped and, and accessed to make sure that they're draining appropriately. Some of the septic tanks were not functioning properly, we've had them dug up and actually cleaned. The one for the primary commercial building, if you're looking at the front of Hickory Corner itself, between the primary building that has the multiple businesses in it and the covered RV storage, back in that area is actually where the septic tank is and it's a pretty massive tank. Initially, it was designed to hold the garage, the beauty shop, you know, the multiple businesses in the front, but currently, there's only three restaurants in use, one for the primary RV maintenance building and then what used to be the restaurant. So that's a grand total of three. But that, that tank is huge.
Well, I, like I said, I'm only reporting what Mr. Ferguson said, I don't even know your name.
Yeah, my name, my name is Mark Major, I apologize.
That's okay.
And I haven't spoken with Mr. Ferguson either, I would love to.
You may be able to enlighten him at some point and maybe he may require, I'm sure he would require some, that it's actually there and what you're saying.
No, absolutely, it'll actually be, it'll actually be pumped in the morning because we've accessed it to determine that it's actually where the last people that owned the restaurant actually had enough oil material that actually solidified in the pipe. So I've recently had it dug and snated, so I know exactly what's in it and what my solid percentage is, someone have that removed tomorrow. And I've had some of the other tanks where...
Some of the microphones.
The other tanks that we found that were full of solids, you know, I don't know why they weren't cleared before, but they're cleared now.
Right.
And I'll be honest, my knowledge of septic systems is not great, I just, if something's broken, experts say fix it, we fix it.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question for, I had for...
I just wanted to clarify, if we could clarify your question.
I just wanted to clarify, if we could clarify your question. The existing, when, when the property lines are changed, will that septic tank be on Lot 2? The existing septic tank will be on, where will it be?
For the, if, if Lot 2 is the one that has the larger commercial building on it?
Yes.
Yes, then the septic tank will be...
So, when we change, when the lot line is changed, the septic tank will still be on Lot 2? Will be on Lot 2 instead of Lot 3, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's the way I understand it. I, I can't actually visualize the lots you're looking at.
Will it be with the buildings? Will it be on the same lot the commercial building on?
It will.
And how old is that septic tank? I'm just curious, when was it, you know, when it was?
It was, you know, probably six years.
So...
And they owned that property for...
And there's, there's... And Doug, what you're telling me is that...
This thing, this is the proposed, they're asking, Mr. French, he was asking if the septic system, when you cut this line here, it'll be on that lot.
Absolutely.
Just in all fairness, the Planning Commission does allow for septic tanks and field points to be on other properties as long as there's an...
Yeah, I, I understand that.
There's no requirement for that. The lower, the lower shop, you know, if you take into Hickory Corner Drive, Hickory Corner Circle, all of those septic tanks that are in and of the park itself are gonna still be within those lines. The primary building, the commercial building with the storage and everything, that septic system will stay within those lines as well. Really, the, the true benefit is actually having the house removed from Hickory Corner Drive, because somehow, it's tied in with a part of the trailer park, and it should've never been tied in that way. So, that's really the, the primary goal, is to have the park all enclosed in one plat, the house enclosed in one plat, and then the commercial building in one plat, that's the whole idea.
Right.
Is to kinda put it back to that, so, but all the tanks will be feeding and on the property of which they're contained. There won't be any change in that. So, yes, to answer your question, yes, the tank will still be, I can show you exactly where the tank is for the primary commercial building. It's actually really close to where the number 2 is. If you look at the number 2, where it says 2 acres, and you go to the right a little bit, it's right there. It's huge, it's, there's a big power pole, and it's between the power pole and the building. So, I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Well, essentially, when we understand their systems there, that, that's really not the issue. The functioning of the systems, whether or not they were dividing or not, would be subject to the Environmental Health Department at some point in the future, if they have a failure to go out there and notify, I'm gonna get it fixed. What we're looking at here is basically the requirement for duplication, do we have it? Can Gary Ferguson find it? And if not, is the Planning Commission willing to waive that and grant a variance? So, anything that has to do with the existing systems that are underground will and is gonna be worked on by Gary Ferguson. And, I mean, if they never came to the Planning Commission and the systems were out there failing in the mobile home park, when a complaint would come in, Gary would go out. Actually, I think the complaints came in prior to any of this request, and he's been working on it for a while with the owners. And, you know, that's an in-progress thing. But I think what we need to think about is going beyond what's in the ground and what our requirement is for duplication, and if the Planning Commission can accept that, if the Environmental Health Department can make, make it work.
I don't know who was next, somebody over there. Brad, go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with this property a little bit, and, but are you, are you a property manager, or are you dividing it for Mr. Hatcher?
I'm his son-in-law, so...
Son-in-law, okay, okay. Okay, okay.
I think you've already met with her, I've just been the one that's been taking care of it, you know, actively taking care of it. She's responsible for it, we, we tag-team it, but I have more working knowledge of the, of the property.
Oh, okay.
Just of late.
Okay. So, you're just fam, family helping get this done, and, and they're in their 90s, and you're getting ready to divide for an estate or whatever, I guess?
Actually, James and Lydia Hatcher, this property is, I own, manage, and maintain by Jimmy Ray Hatcher, which is James and Lydia's son.
Okay, yeah.
So, I'm taking care of it, James and Lydia haven't taken care of the park in years.
Right, 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 okay.
That's a good point, though, I mean, just for clarification, you have power of attorney, do you not?
Right.
So, in essence, anything that happens to the property, she, she has the authority to make those decisions.
Okay, I just, I didn't, I didn't know if he was a Realtor or part of the family or whatever, I was just trying to get it clarified, I'm an expert on property management, so I just...
Not at all.
Getting that cleared up. Yeah, it, it's just, if, if, you know, if this meets a requirement with, or you could get this done with the state and with, or with Gary Ferguson, then this, we, we shouldn't have any problem with it, as long as, you know, it meets, whatever, we're gonna go on Gary's recommendations is what I would say personally.
Brad, do you have any more questions, other? Cause I wanna move on to some of the other members.
No.
Okay.
What's, what's currently on Lot 2?
Mobile homes.
Okay, so, we're, we're just...
We didn't show, we didn't show the mobile homes on here, cause there's so many, it would...
No, Lot 3, Lot 2's business.
Lot 2's commercial building, no, no, no.
No, no, on the existing.
Existing, okay.
On the existing, so, we're, we're taking, we're, we're taking all the mobile homes and putting them on one lot versus two lots?
Right.
So, if he didn't request to do this, then it would be, the environmental departments, they would be the ones answering all the problems and stuff like that, and they have to redo the septic systems like that?
They're doing that now.
Okay, I, I think I'm kinda in Brad's point.
Let, let me mention this, too. You know, currently, Lot 2 doesn't even have road frontage.
Say that again, Doug.
The existing Lot 2 doesn't even have road frontage, and it doesn't have any described easements, it's a landlocked piece of property. The new design makes three legal lots. And I wanna go back to the point that we have three lots, and we're not changing...
I think we're all on the same page, Doug.
I think we're all.
Somebody else have a, have a...
Ken, I mean, why don't we, can we let Gary work on this a little more, and then get, get some more information from him, and bring it back to us?
Well, let me suggest something. I mean, where I was headed with my question is, we are not making any situation worse.
As far as I...
What is there is there.
Right.
And it's not gonna go away whether we approve it or, or not.
Well, and...
And that's basically where I, what my question was.
Let, let me throw one more thing at you, Mr. Chairman. The fact that they came into us, has Gary probing everything out there? He's working on everything, he's identified a lot of problems, and they've opened themselves up to a can of worms of fixing a lot of stuff that they're gonna be committed to fixing to make this happen. So, I think you actually even have a, you know, if, even if nothing else changed and there's no reserve area, you're getting a little better situation, cause Gary's got his eyes on it.
That's what I was trying to understand, I mean, I just, I wanted to make sure that the commercial septic was on the commercial property.
Right.
That we weren't cutting it off from the commercial property, and that was what my original question was. And the only other detriment that I see is that we're making existing Lot 1 smaller, but it doesn't sound like making it any smaller is gonna have any impact on its septic. Because it apparently is the better piece of property to begin with.
That would be where Gary would have an easement potentially for any future reserve, for the commercial, would have to go into...
All right, Brad, to your question, all we're doing is moving property lines around, but the property lines, if we were just doing a pure plat approval with no buildings on it, we wouldn't do it because it didn't have reserve area. But there's nothing we can do that can make reserve area. So, I mean, all we're doing is taking the existing situation and replating the lines.
So, in order to go back to Gary Ferguson...
Right.
And it's the same situation as the previous problem. It's not here for approval, all he's looking for is...
Exactly.
The concept that, you know...
And to work with the Health Department to see how...
Right, as long as Gary comes back with, yeah, with favorable comment.
Go ahead.
The reason we brought it to you, first off, is because it is an unusual situation, and Gary's pretty much determined that very probably, you will not have reserve area on any of the lots you create by rearranging the lot lines. Our requirements are that we have reserve area, so when this come back, comes back to you, that's probably gonna be one of the requests for variance. That it is an existing situation, they've made as many improvements as they can, and Gary can confirm that, but you'll be asked for a variance when it comes back, very probably. And keep in mind that, you know, that, that loop and the dead end with the hammerhead is actually managed as one unit for mobile homes, it just happens to be across three properties. It would be much more saleable, much more manageable, if you had that on one property. So, I think that's the goal here, is to get the mobile home park on one property, the commercial building on one property, and the house on one property, three different types of uses, and have them all on different properties. And you've got three, you end up with three, you're just moving the lot lines. But you will be asked probably for a variance on reserve.
Can I mention a few more things, Mr. Chairman? What was I gonna say? One of the items that I haven't mentioned is, anything that we do here will have, they'll have to make an application to the BZA as well. And I don't know if Roger has any comments or not, but that'll be another step, and it'll have to be approved as well. The, I really can't remember what I was gonna say about the existing systems. That, it, it's a variance situation, and, I completely lost my train of thought, I apologize. If it comes back to me, I'll bring it back up.
All right, there was one, one more, go, go ahead, Commissioner French.
I do, do have one, and we're talking, and Johnson, you brought this up, we're talking about reserve area. Let's, let's, now, the existing three lots, let's, let's go with the existing, are there reserve areas on these existing three lots right now?
No, no.
So, so Lot 1, as it exists right now, there's no reserve area on Lot 1? As it exists right now?
There might be on Lot 1.
Okay, well, all right, my next question, on Lot 2, as it exists right now, there's no reserve area?
Probably not, probably not.
Well, and then on Lot 3, I'm gonna ask, is that there's no existing reserve area?
Probably not.
All right, the probably kinda bugs me, because if we move the lot lines...
If I could, the, the reason it's probably not is there has not been an intensive soil map done.
I understand.
But the lay of the land and Gary's eyes on it says, it's so disturbed that you're not gonna find with a soil scientist any area out there for reserve. But that's to be confirmed when it comes through as a plat.
On the existing, is what I'm looking at.
On any existing system.
The proposed, when we move those, you're gonna change that probably to no way, there's no existing reserve.
No, no, not necessarily.
Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily, I said probably both times.
Okay, then that's, okay, that's, you answered my question then.
I kinda know what I wanted to say.
Go ahead, Doug.
Okay. If the, you know, if the variance is granted at a preliminary plat stage or preliminary and final plat stage, once the plats come in, Gary will make very particular notes in a very particular situation like this. It's not gonna be a standard stamp it and everything's fine, we're gonna put some particular notes on there. I think one of the concerns that I'm kinda hearing in the background is, you know, the idea is to allow the division to occur the new way in order to have a market, something to market. Once those are on the plat, then, you know, when, when it goes to be sold, there's some buyer protections out there, or when they do a disclosure on these properties, those notes will be on the plat. And so, I think there is some protection, even though there won't be duplication in this case, we're acknowledging the existing situation by way of variance, not making anything worse, maybe making it better with Gary working on it. But I don't think anybody's gonna walk into it blind, cause I think it'll be clearly noted on the final plats.
Doug, also, there was a statement, I believe, in your notes somewhere, old Lot 1, you're saying in your notes, old Lot 1 doesn't have road frontage?
I might've had the wrong number written down, old Lot 2 doesn't have road frontage. The reason that that's incorrect is, when the surveyor sent the original one, it didn't, and then he figured it out.
Well, I just, when I looked at, when I looked at the drawing, I said, how does Lot 1 not have road frontage? And it's, okay, but...
I got about five versions of this one, and this one came in a couple days after that.
Okay, are we all on, are all of us commissioners?
I've got one more question.
Go ahead.
Will, will the, will there be improvements to the mobile home park as far as the quantity of mobile homes that's on it now? Will that be reduced to help the septic situation?
I think that's gonna be a final decision of Gary Ferguson.
Is that Gary's call?
We met with Kerry and Gary, and Gary indicated that a few of the units most likely would either have to be moved off-site or onto some empty lots, and that wasn't an issue with the owner at all, so, glad to do it if that's what needed to be done.
Just, just to make a note that they have done some improvements, when Gary went out there, there were some obvious problems on top of the ground, that indicated that there were problems under the ground, and the, the owners have made some effort, or had done some corrections already. There's probably a few more corrections to be made, and some of those might be taking units off, but we don't know that yet. So, it's in progress.
Do we have general consensus that we understand the needs and where they're headed, and we can work with it? All right, we have a general approval of the conceptual plan, you'll have to work with Mr. Ferguson and go the route of getting the formalities and the BZA.
Yeah, and...
What is the nature of the BZA?
It's for density and maybe setbacks, that, we'll have to determine that when the actual plat comes in. It'd be variances to setbacks, cause there's units set all over. And I do want you to know that since this is gonna be a three-lot plat, it does have to come back to the Planning Commission for your approval. It's not something we'll do internally. So, have your surveyor bring us a plat after you talk to Gary, and we'll move forward. Is that it?
Thank you for being here. You, you can talk with them in, in terms of what your next steps need to be.
Right, and of course, I've, I've never spoken to Gary, you know, so, it's hard to go on from this point forward out here, but, you know, it's something to be fixed, I didn't know about that. There's, there's nothing we can't resolve, I'm gonna be done here in a minute, and I'll, I'll meet you guys in the hallway and get you going to the next step. You're welcome.
Okay, Barbara Law has been, the Barbara Law plat has been withdrawn from the agenda, we have a, you have a memo in front of you, I believe, that may come back to us, but for the moment, it is withdrawn.
Yes, since she withdrew it, we don't need any formal action from the Planning Commission, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Discussion of, long range, discussion of setback and separation requirements for telecommunication towers. Roger?
This comes from our discussion last month, you guys, want me to bring back some information? And the first being, just kind of what the BZA has done and what their, what their concerns are, as, as far as the relief that they've had to grant for these separation distances. And when I turned up since 2000, when we started doing these, we've, we've, out of 14 sites that they, these are just the approved sites, eight of the 14 had to have some relief from the 300 percent. The average footage of relief that was granted was 165 feet, with the greatest amount being 120, 321, and the least amount being 52 feet. And the six towers met all of the separation and setback requirements. Then I, I got some other jurisdictions regulations for this report, and they're all worded differently, so I, for simplicity's sake, I just kinda took a tower and compared it to what hours we would require, without getting into the verbiage that they use, because some of it, it reads like lawyer stuff. But the City of Maryville's has a, a, a graph to go by, or not, a graphic, a table to go by, and it basically depends on what the property abutting the cell site would be used for. And, and their setbacks for a cell tower would range from 75 feet, 200 feet, 300 feet, and 450. The 450 would be, would match what our max is, or our requirement is, and that's 300 percent of tower height. For vacant, unplatted, residentially-zoned property, they require 300 feet at 2... For vacant, unplatted, residentially zoned property, they require 300 feet at 200, 200 percent of the tower height. For existing multifamily units greater than a duplex, it would be 200 feet for a, for 100 percent of the tower, or 100 percent of the tower height, whichever's greater. And then for non-resident, residentially zoned lands or residentially used lands, it'd be 75 feet. The City of Alcoa's, uh, used 30 feet plus one foot for each additional, uh, three feet that's above 35 feet, which would give them a 68-foot setback for our 150-foot tower. Loudoun County would require 150-foot setback from the property line, from any R1 zone parcel. Washington County would be 150 feet for our 150-feet tower, would be required to setback 175 feet. And, uh, of course, our regulations would require the 450 feet. There was also some question about radio frequency interference with household goods or consumer products inside the home. Everything I tried to, and I searched the internet until my eyes crossed, every time, everything I came across was about regulations on having devices that would interrupt the cell signals. So I couldn't find any, any, just on searches, I couldn't find anything where the cell towers or the antennas created any frequency disturbance with consumer goods. I did run across an interesting report, though, as far as health effects from the, because that has come up in, in BZA meetings before, so I, I thought that was an interesting little read that I attached to the back of the, uh, the report there. And I made some suggestions down here. These are just, you know, suggestions. The first one, of course, is just to leave it as it is. The second would be, uh, to, um, have the separation distance of, uh, 200 feet or 150 percent of the tower height. You know, these are numbers that you guys can play with. This isn't carved in stone, it's just kind of the, the template. And then the third was one that was similar to what a couple of the jurisdictions used was a set tower height. Anything beyond that height would require X amount of feet for every additional X amount of foot of tower height. And the example I used specifically would basically give you the separation of 100 percent of, of the tower height. And, and you know, you can always just go back and write it in that way. I, these were just some suggestions to, to get the ball rolling coming.
Roger, uh, your suggestion number one, is that the way it reads right now?
Yes.
Okay, so the minimum separation distance right now from R1 is 200 feet?
Yeah, for a residentially used or platted.
Right.
Yeah, you know, if it's a farm, it goes to the just 75-foot setback.
Commissioner Kirby, you'd asked kind of the information on residential interference and health effects that, have you been, have your, has your question been answered?
Yeah, I, I look for any kind of consumer product that, because a lot of, uh, microwaves, TVs, baby monitors.
Roger, I, as I read your notes, I was, I guess I was somewhat surprised at the variety. I mean, it's all over the ballpark. The, uh, and I guess the, the suggestion from my perspective, I liked, uh, your option number three, except that I would probably, uh, the separation distance, we can, we can talk about, but I would suggest, uh, say maybe 100 feet minimum separation and one and a half foot additional per foot over a certain threshold. In other words, if, if we set it at 100 feet, then any tower over 100 feet, it would be an additional one and a half foot instead of your one foot for every foot. I guess what, my, and my rationale behind that was thinking back to what John said, we were trying to mitigate, uh, the impacts of higher towers in residential areas. So I'm putting a penalty on raising that tower any higher than what you need to by making it, every foot you go up, you have to add a foot and a half of separation. That's just a thought. There's no science in it, anything else. Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess the whole purpose of, of establishing some kind of s- distance, my understanding is to protect the, the property line or the property of the adjacent owner is, that's the way I would look at it. You're trying to protect the adjacent owner's property. So I, I guess my question in, I would think that whether it's residential, whether it's agricultural, whether, whatever the use of the property next to it, is you wanna protect that particular property the way I'm, I mean, I'm just trying to use a little common sense there and saying if the, if the tower is 100 feet, then it ought to be...
100 feet.
Well, at least 100 feet. Now, you might wanna have a buffer zone, but at least 100 feet from any property line, whether it's residential, agriculture, or whatever. And I agree with, uh, the chairman, uh, and if it goes above that, then, then you buffer it a little more. My understanding, most of these towers are built to collapse inside, inside themselves, uh, what I've been able to find out. That may not necessarily happen in every case. So, so I'm gonna suggest that whatever the height of the tower, it'd be at least that far from a property line. If it's a, and I don't know what the standard, uh, height of a, of a cell tower is. I, I don't know. You, uh, if it's...
I use 150 because it's kinda right in the middle.
So I'm thinking it oughta, it oughta be at least 150 feet from...
Well, that...
From that property line, but that may not be the, you know, may not be able to do that in, in several instances. I don't know.
Well, I, I think they, they can from, of course, we'd have to have drawings of what the BZA has given variances on at this point, but Roger's paragraph three, uh, actually addresses what you're talking about, but my one and a half per one foot then gives you the additional buffer. So basically, and Roger, you correct me if I'm wrong, paragraph three says that the separation distance at minimum is the tower height.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's the setback.
Well...
No, no, that's separation.
Let's not talk about setback and, and separation.
That's separation.
Separation and setback are the same thing, right?
Well, we, we use separation when it's talking about distance from other towers or residentially used or platted, residentially plated properties.
In that, in the case of residential, the separation is the setback from the residential property line?
Correct.
Which is 75 percent of the height of the tower under our Regulation 6. What he's talking about here is only separation, which is, which is Article 7 of our regulation. So we're just talking about separation.
Okay.
Between the tower and the nearest property line.
But I think what we're trying to define is separation.
Correct. That is correct, and this is confusing. It's, it, I don't know why the separation and setback is different, to be honest with you.
I'm sticking to the, the computation of separation because that seems to be the, uh, the key.
Yeah, yeah, and it's the point of confusion. The setback for any tower is 75 percent of the tower height if it's abutting a commercial use or if it's just abutting...
Agriculture.
A big farm or, or a vacant big parcel. That's 75 percent of the tower height.
That's our current regu...
That's always the setback.
That's our current regulation.
Okay.
The separation, the separation is where we get into the 300 percent of the tower, the tower height or 250 feet, whichever's greater.
Comes into play when we're dealing with residential.
And that only comes in when we're dealing with residential lots.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's, so we're on, I'm on the same page with you.
Yeah.
Paragraph three, as you have proposed it in the notes, page three, paragraph three.
Oh, the example number three?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay.
Okay, so you're saying that paragraph three is dealing...
It would be still dealing with the distance between the tower and the residential lot
So you're starting at 75 feet plus one foot greater than 75 foot?
Yeah, which offers no buffers on.
So in, in, you, you are saying the separation is gonna be...
Yeah, that, that example would be...
So it works with what I was suggesting. If we say, uh, 75 feet plus one and a half feet per foot greater...
Above that.
Above that. Then you are penalizing them for going any higher than they need to have in terms of the separation. Let me give you an example. We have a 75-foot tower, according to the regs as you, or to your suggestion in paragraph, suggestion three, the sep, the separation is 75 feet. If they go to 150 foot with what I am suggesting, then the separation would be 75 foot plus one and a half times 75, which is 75 plus 37 and a half, which is 132 and a half.
Yeah, right.
Uh, so it'd be 200, 200-plus feet separation for 150-foot tower. Does everybody understand what I'm...
Yeah.
And I, but I, a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
In, uh, in both your one and two options...
Pretty much the same.
Okay, but let's keep, in both of those, it says 200 feet or a percentage of the height of the tower, whichever's greater. When you rewrite number three, you're really bringing that down because you hadn't got a minimum. Your first two's got a minimum of 200, and this one right here doesn't have a minimum.
Well, that's why I suggested ta, changing the minimum from 75 to 100.
But still getting smaller than what we have today.
That, that was what, that was what...
That's what we...
You can get there two ways. You can change the minimum or you can change the percentage of the, of the ha, tower height to get there.
I agree.
Go ahead. Just, just one thing on the use of words. We're not trying to penalize towers. We're trying to mitigate their effect. So you're, you're actually getting a, a hype and a sep, you're getting a separation to mitigate the hype effect of the tower. The, the fall zone is the setback part of that. The extra is to mitigate the height of the tower. So let's not use the term penalized. We might get into trouble if we ever get taken to court, okay?
Two-way descent. Uh, Commissioner French?
I, I think, I, I agree with the chairman, uh, except the 70, and the 75-foot, it, there's no buffer zone, or if you move it to 100 foot, there's no buffer zone. And between, what I'm saying, between 100-foot tower, if it's 100 foot off the line, there's no buffer zone. But with what you're suggesting, there will be a buffer zone for everything above that. I think the 75 and the 100-foot need some kind of buffer zone there also. Plus, I, I don't, I don't think it should make any difference what kind of property is abutting the, the piece of property. I don't, I don't care whether it's residential, agricultural, or whatever. I think we ought to have the same, uh, guidelines for the cell tower, no matter what, what abuts that piece of property. Because we're trying to protect that owner's piece of property that's beside it, and it, it ought, whether it's agricultural or residential, it should make a difference to me.
Do I have a light over here? That put everybody to sleep. What is the, what, what is our direction to Roger? We need to give Roger some direction. We need to address a problem. It's clear, eight out of 14, that's 60 percent or better, uh, they're having to give variance on. So we've got a...
And the problem, and, and again, not to lose focus on why we're even talking about it, is because the BZA was getting uncomfortable because a majority of the time, they're having to grant some relief on this. And all the jurisdictions had that stipulation in their zoning regulations. The BZA ultimately, if they see fit, can lessen that, but the BZA, our BZA was getting a little concerned because of the amounts that they were being requested to, to, to relieve and, and the frequency. And it seems like the towers that are coming in now are the, less likely to be out in the rural areas and more likely to be more in urbanized areas. And...
We, we could...
Just not to lose focus on why we're even talking about it.
Does everybody feel comfortable with option one, two, or three? How many are in favor of leaving it the same as it is? Nobody's in favor of leaving it the same. All right. Suggestion two, uh, of Roger's said separation distance shall be 200 feet. The 200 feet seem to me to be excessive.
50 percent of the tower height, whichever's greater.
Whichever's greater, but the, the 200 seemed like a large starting point. That's, that's four, that means you've got a 400-foot lot. Uh, you're, you're talking about a, taking up a big chunk of land when you're not really trying to protect, I mean, there's, you, you're starting out at, if the average tower's 150 foot, to address your concern, Commissioner French, it only needs to be 160 foot from the tower, which gives you a 320-foot lot.
Right.
200 is going way over that.
Agreed.
So I'm, I guess my perspective is, is why are we trying to chew up land?
Those numbers are ju, I, I just...
No, I, 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 Roger, I'm not taking, picking fault with you.
Yeah.
I'm, I guess I'm, what I'm debating is, is there a reason to go to 200 foot? Commissioner French?
If, if we're trying to create a buffer zone for all, no matter what height, if it's 75 foot, why not, could we not just say one and a half foot times the tower height?
You could.
That way, 75 foot would be 102 and a half feet or whatever. Or if it's 100 foot, it'd be 150 foot, which would give you a buffer zone no matter what you, what size.
I would, I would agree with that, except that if you go to a 300-foot tower, now you, now you're 400, 450 feet. No, no 300-foot towers? What, what's the highest of the...
Well, I think the highest one we've got in the county, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure it's the one over by Target, and it's a 300-foot tower. That's an old tower. Our BZA has been pretty active of keeping these things below 200 feet to keep lights off of them. So, uh, and the cell, the industry's pretty responsive when they see a, a pattern, so we rarely get them coming in with a light on it because they know our BZA doesn't like
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Uh, I can support your recommendation of number three by changing 75 feet to 100 feet with the one foot greater than 100-foot tower.
So, so it would say then separation distance shall be 100 feet plus one and a half foot per foot greater than 75?
No, 100.
Okay, but that does not address Commissioner French's, uh, need or desire for some buffer. In other words, having some, something so that there is a buffer built in...
For the 100-foot tower.
For the 100-foot tower.
Well, 70-foot would be 100.
Could I, could I ask something, Mike, clarify? How mu, how much, what's the height, uh, regulation on a CB tower? Just to, you know, somebody wants to have a ham radio...
It's 70, I think it's 70.
75 feet.
Yeah, I think, we don't even regulate them up, up to that point.
Yeah, so I think that, that number kinda comes from the... Yeah, so I think that number kind of comes from the ham radio tower, and that's something that people put on their property, and it serves a different purpose than a cell tower. But 75 feet, I think, comes from that or close to it. Because we don't regulate anything over that or less than that.
And according to the literature you gave, Roger, it says that most of your cell towers are 50 to 200 feet. That's the human, you know, where the human exposure, radio, according to that literature, it says most cell towers are 50 to 100 feet. So, like the chairman said, the only thing that would address is the 100-foot tower. A 75-foot or 50-foot tower, you've got a buffer for the rest of that 100 feet. The only thing that would address is the 100-foot tower.
Well, or whatever we said is the base separation.
Commissioner Walker?
One thing I think we need to think about is, should we not try to encourage them to use smaller towers? And then when, like it's, I mean, I like three, and then I like tacking on the, I like the 75-foot and then tacking it on if they go higher than that. And maybe by, maybe by the 75 feet, we can encourage more towers, but lower towers. And is that not a better situation for the county than to have, you know, if a guy's got to go, if they've got to go out and do a 600-foot by 600-foot, put up 300-foot towers to do the same thing? Do we, do we want to make sure that we're not...
Roger, what is the minimum setback?
The minimum...
For commercial or agricultural right now?
75% of the tower height.
75% of it. We could address Commissioner French's concern if we just change the language in option three to say separation distance shall be 85 feet plus one foot for every one foot greater than 75 foot.
One foot.
Did you get my math there?
75. Okay.
You got a 10-foot? Can you run with that, Roger? Everybody comfortable with that?
I can bring you back something next month in a neater form. I definitely think it gets us off of the highest end of the spectrum, which that's where we're at now, so. I believe so.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
One more question, Mr. Chairman. When you come back, since you had eight that you had to make, could you take the new regulation and say how many of those would have still needed a variance?
Yeah, it'll take some time, but I can do it.
Well, okay, all right, that's okay. That's a, I withdraw the request.
Well, I would take a look at a couple of them. You don't have to do them all, but take some of the extremes.
I'll take a look at the biggest. I'll get some of the more extreme ones and bring you some numbers back.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial. Okay, thank you, Roger, for your research and...
Thank you, guys.
We'll look for your input next meeting. Proposed regulation for campgrounds and RV parks. John?
Okay. This is bringing back to you several months of discussion. The changes to the present, the changes to the previously proposed regulations that failed more than a year ago. Start on page one. The highlights and the cross-out shows the changes. And if you look over that to make sure that that is complete and that I have covered everything. If that is the case, I'll also provide a final resolution form, just in case you want to recommend this out, final resolution form in clean form, starting on page nine. So, I think this is really up to discussion, opening to discussion on the changes that have been highlighted, either in cross-out or highlight.
Has everybody had a chance to look at it? Or you want to give you a few minutes to look through the highlighted sections there? Basically, John took our input from last month's meeting and actually affected or made those changes in the document on pages one, two, three, four, up through eight, I guess it was. And then has a resolution which actually reflects those changes that we recommended to him in the form of a resolution to be sent on to the county commission for their, their action.
Chairman, can I make a recommendation that we put this off until next month and give everybody a chance to look over it? Because July is, this, I feel like as soon as that the commission can look at this, it's going to be July. Am I not correct?
If you put it off till next month, actually, they need to set a public hearing and have 30 days notice of, you know, public hearing. So, you put it off quite a bit more. You probably get it off into September if you put it off that long.
Few things of concern are the, are the the permanent, or having a camp, a camper on site for, for the help. I think that's on page...
Page two.
Page two. I think we need to limit that to at least, to no more than one unit if we're going to allow that.
I guess you're figuring they're only going to have one help?
Well, hopefully, they're going to have, they're going to have help that lives in the neighborhood. And I don't... I don't really have a problem with it myself, John, but I think that we need to limit it if we're going to allow it.
Did you also have thoughts on what Commissioner Walker is suggesting? He's talking about paragraph two, B sub one. Recreational vehicles owned by the owner of the campground to house seasonal camp workers shall be exempt from this requirement, which is a 60-day maximum. Mr. French?
I've got two comments. The biggest thing I'm hearing about these campgrounds is, why do we want them in the R1 zone? That's one of the biggest things I'm hearing from people out in my district. And I guess the second question is, John, if we do put it off a month, what's, is there a reason why? I mean, it will postpone it another month, I understand that, but is there a reason why we can't do that? I mean, are we in a, are we on a, some kind of time constraint or something? Is there a...
No, it's just, you know...
And this, and be honest with you, and what I'm basing this on is, this thing's come forth with the commission twice, and it's been shot down. If we want the commission to vote on this, we're going to have to have every T crossed and every I dotted, I think, for it to pass the commission.
Okay, you'd ask the question. Let me answer the first one. You can defer this. There's no, there's no requirement that you vote it out and recommend it. But you've got to ask to yourself a question. Have we not gone over all the issues in detail? You know, if there's more discussion to be had, I thought we would have had it at the last meeting or some of the meetings before. If there's more discussion, definitely go ahead and defer it. But if there's really no further discussion, it's just a matter of not wanting to address it tonight. That's the, that's the purview of the planning commission, but I think there's been a lot of discussion and quite a bit of detail. And I think I have captured most of that, if not all of it. And I'm asking if, is there any residual concern? You had a concern that you expressed about why have it in the R1 zone at all? And I think we've been over that before, is you would have to have a special zone for it created. And that has been, that has not been the approach that we wanted to take in the past. If that is going to be the approach in the future, we need to basically rework this whole thing as far as how it's going to be applied. So, having it as a special exception, given that the R1 zone is, has other special exceptions involved, shooting ranges, things like that, that are recreational and tourism-type of uses, then it might be appropriate to have it in the R1 zone, but have it as a special exception with specific limitations. That way, you get the control over where it's going to be located and the design issues involved in placing something like this in the rural zone. Either way, if you have a special zone, you're going to have to be, you're going to be addressing the same things.
I guess my question is then would, would these, if we get a request for, if somebody wants to put an RV park in, would it come, if each, each incident would come back to us for approval?
It would go to border zoning appeals.
And it's automatic with, as far as if we write this in the... Right, I see. I noticed.
They're not in...
I'm just still not happy with 60 days to somebody to spend in there. I know. Two months to me is, I still think too long. When I go camping, I don't look at camping for two months. I just think that's excessive. That's me personally. I, you know, I've talked, I've got a bunch of friends that go camping. They, you know, some of the places they go, as long as they pay their fee, they can camp there year-round, but... Yeah.
They got a little room, they travel in the summertime, and they camp. It is not unusual for them to go someplace and stay two months.
Okay.
That's about, you know, 30 days to 60 days is about their run, their stay.
Exactly.
I think 60 days allows retired travelers an opportunity to become a business.
I agree with that. I don't, I just accept it to me. Yeah. It was 240, yeah. Yeah.
Gerald, you have any thoughts? Pardon? Well, we have skinned it down. I mean, we have addressed at least everything that has been brought to, I believe, our attention that was objection. We have severely or significantly limited it to the cord, the two corridors that seem appropriate, most appropriate to us for a campground. It does not attack the general R1, what we would consider R1. I know everybody raises the question, R1, but you're not going to put campgrounds right in the heart of a commercial district. And there aren't any commercial districts along the arterials that we're talking about. So, unless somebody has some real reason, I would suggest that we send it, as Commissioner Kirby has said, on to the county commission. Let them hold their public hearing and let the chips fall where they, where they fall. But I think we've addressed one.
I'd like to, I'd like to make that motion.
All right, I have a motion on second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like signs. We send it on to the commission with a unanimous vote. And I am going to suggest that item three just be a standing item, and we will come back to commercial zoning issues at a subsequent meeting. John, do you have anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned, but thank you, gentlemen.